The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We are going to, oops, I got the wrong sheet, sorry. We're going to begin with the remote electronic attendance.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of First Ward Alderman Scott Williams, Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Alderman at Large Sonia Berg at the committee of the whole and city council meetings of July twenty first, twenty twenty second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Motion carries. And we're now going to begin with a couple of votes of office. I'd like to invite Officer Hoover to the podium, please.
This is an oath of office for a probationary appointment as police officer to Connor J. Hoogerworth effective March second, two thousand twenty.
I'd like to read your vote. Could you please raise your right hand? I, Connor Hoogerworth.
Aye, Connor Hoogerworth.
Having been newly appointed as a probationary police officer for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Having been newly appointed as a probationary police officer for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of a probationary police officer for the City of Moline, Illinois.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of a probationary police officer for the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll be very keen on having you before.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, council, I introduce you to one of our newest officers, Connor Hoogerworth. He's here accompanied tonight by his wife Amelia, his Lila and Landon, his brother Tyler. Some of you may recognize Tyler. He's formerly a Moline police officer, is now a trooper with the Illinois State Police. His sister Sarah and niece McKenna, sorry, McKenna. So tonight, I'd like to invite his wife Amelia Ford to pin the badge onto Connor's ear. And pull it out at the same time. Congratulations. Connor, most recently was active duty Army, served there for just under eight years, was a medic in the Army and a former resident of North Carolina, and has just joined us here. He's one of our COVID class officers who really got the short end of the stick, having to go back and forth to the academy, doing Zoom training, having to go back down. So we're very excited that he's graduated and is continuing on in the MTO program. You'll soon see him patrolling solo on the streets of Moline, protecting our great community. So thank you very much, Connor Hoogerworth.
Thank you.
How am I supposed to do this?
Yeah, I know she's...
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. It's the first one we've had. Congratulations, welcome board.
And now we have an oath of office for a probationary appointment as police officer to Jeannie M. Hernandez, effective March second, two thousand twenty.
Could you please raise your right hand? I'm going to have you speak at it. I, Jeannie M. Hernandez.
I, Jeannie M. Hernandez.
Having been newly appointed as a probationary police officer for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Having been newly appointed as a probationary police officer for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of a probationary police officer for the City of Moline, Illinois.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of a probationary police officer for the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations and thanks for your...
Thank you, Mayor and council. My pleasure to introduce you to Jeannie Hernandez. Our most recent police officer, also went to the academy with Connor Hoogerworth and the back and forth to SWIP, the police academy on several occasions. A tough go, but as you see in the notes here, she was actually hired along with Connor March second. So it's been a long journey to be here. She's joined tonight by her father Paul, her mother Sherry and her brother Alex. And I'd like to invite Paul Ford to pin Jeannie's badge on her. Jeannie joins us, most recently from Jumers Casino as an employment and a recent graduate of the University of Wisconsin Platteville with a major in criminal justice. So welcome, Jeannie Hernandez, and invite you to come forward and take some photos with your family.
I'm stranded. Is we can just kind of let them... Very well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
We have a few more appointments tonight. First, mayor's appointment of Susan Archer to the park board to fill the unexpired term of Lauren Schreier, expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty four.
Motion to approve Parker. Is there a motion on this one?
Oh, yeah, there would be. Good idea.
Motion to approve Parker.
Second.
So we have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this appointment? Roll.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went? I'm sorry, Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Motion carries. We have an oath of office for this position. Could you please raise your right hand? I, Susan Archer.
I, Susan Archer.
Having been newly appointed to the Park and Recreation Board for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Having been newly appointed to the Park and Recreation Board for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Park and Recreation Board.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Park and Recreation Board.
For the City of Moline, Illinois.
For the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So sign though, if you need to. And then I welcome your feedback to the community council.
I appreciate the opportunity to serve the community and I, especially in the park capacity, because it's one of the only things we can do now to be outside. So I appreciate it and I'm excited to get started, so.
See you Thursday.
Yeah, and so I would give credit to Susan. She's done a wonderful job of raising money for our pickleball court. She's taken on that initiative and that's what I think we do, have the community's attention towards you as being a wonderful asset to the courts because you already have demonstrated how much about it, so thank you.
I do feel about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we also have mayor's appointment of Eric Van Speibrecht and Andrew Seivertson to the Moline Center Main Street Commission for full three-year terms to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. And mayor, I believe we have Eric Van Speibrecht.
We have to do the vote, though, first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve Parker.
We have a motion to approve both candidates by Alderman Parker.
Second.
There's a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on either of the candidates? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Motion carries. Eric, are you on the video conference?
I'm on the phone, yes.
Oh, you're on the phone. Would you like to address?
I've dialed it. I would, thank you. First off, congratulations on getting the last name correct. I know that's challenge number one. But I'll be, I'll be brief. You know, thank you both, Mayor Akri and the commission, for the recommendation for the board position. It's been something I've been thinking about for a while and both honored and excited to be considered. As a Moline homeowner now for the last eight years, together with my wife Lauren and three daughters, we've enjoyed many of the events that have been put on over the years by the city center. Professionally, I've worked in IT consulting and risk management now for the past sixteen years, with the last six being at Rouse Consulting Group, employed as the director of sales and marketing. Rouse is a managed IT service provider who has held residency in the historic Roger Cafe building on Sixteenth Street for the last twenty-plus years. Needless to say, I spend a majority of my time downtown as it is. Again, excited to bring some new ideas to both the downtown area and the betterment of the city of Moline as a whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service in helping us out in this area. I think you'll do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Very excited. Thank you.
Do we have any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing none. We'll begin with our agenda items. Item number one is an update. Updated CDBG policies, the procedure manual with appendix K. KJ Whitley.
Good evening, everyone, remotely and in person. Nice to be back in here. Tonight, I'm asking for permission, authorization to change a few things in our policy book. First one is updating the race and ethnicity categories. The second one is adding that you need a realtor or a lawyer to go through a homebuyer's course. And the third one is adding the COVID nineteen small business loans.
Do you recommend approval or...
Yes, I'm recommending approval.
Perfect.
Motion to approve Parker.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this recommendation?
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Berg?
The only thing, and I'm sorry, KJ, I didn't catch this earlier, but maybe perhaps adding a real estate attorney to the guide, where you have using a realtor or a real estate attorney, because not all attorneys are real estate attorneys. Agreed, Mike? Alderman Went?
There are on occasion where someone will try to use their Med Mal uncle as a real estate attorney and they do not know what they're doing. So while there's not any specific qualification that you are a specific real estate attorney, I think staff can make that guidance with them to make sure that they have an attorney that knows what they're doing.
Are you asking for an amendment, Alderman Berg, or are you just suggesting an area that staff needs to pay attention to?
I think, I think KJ knows what she's doing, so I think I will just go ahead and leave it at that. That as long as staff makes the, just watches for that, I guess.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, KJ. The next item is a north slope dewatering. Tony Lodi.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council. This item was before you back in March and was tabled. But in the world of wastewater, the solids and liquids that come into the treatment plant need to be separated, and we use dewatering equipment to do that. The dewatering equipment at North Plant is at the end of its useful life. We use filter presses there. And due to the volume of the solids coming in and the fact that there really is no significant storage there at that plant, it creates a single point of failure in the treatment plant. And so it's critical for us to move forward with a look at determining what's the best equipment to use at that plant. So we went forward and solicited for proposals from engineering firms that specialize in this work. And we received responses from five firms that were relatively qualified to do this work and were able to negotiate with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly a satisfactory amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. And so specifically, they're going to make recommendations to us to look at the specific equipment that should be used at the, at, really at both plants. Also look at our workflow. Currently, we batch in the solids two days a week and we're wondering if there isn't some other alternative to where we could potentially use equipment even unmanned or while the plant isn't even staffed. And there are other plants that we've looked at that do that. There's also, we want to have them study the way we convey the material from the dewatering equipment and then put it on the ground and then pick it back up again and then put it in a truck. And we're just wanting to look at the efficiency of that whole thing. The bulk of the material that comes into the plant is a byproduct of the lime softening at the water treatment plant. So in conjunction with this study that they're doing, they're going to look at the lime solids in general and determine whether or not it's feasible to do some dewatering at the water plant and take it out of the wastewater stream. That has been looked at before, but technology has improved. Regulations have changed also, so we want them to take a look at that also. And then, and then the last thing they'll look at is the disposal. The, all of the material at North Plant is landfilled. And, you know, with some treatment to stabilize the biosolids there, there is potential for us to beneficially reuse that material. So with much lower or zero disposal costs. So at that, staff recommends approval of this agreement with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Parker?
Tony, thanks for the, for bringing this up. When, we just redid North Slope within the last few years and spent tens of millions of dollars on it, didn't we?
That is correct. That in the, while the planning was going on for North Slope and those improvements back in the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen timeframe, it was determined by staff at that time that it was more advantageous to delay the look at the dewatering equipment for a couple of reasons. One was there was evolution occurring in the, in the technology of, you know, that equipment at the time. And number two was we believe that a project that we could do between both plants could be advantageous at the time. So it was decided to delay that at the time.
Follow-up?
Yes, please.
So that's, that makes, you know, some sense. However, as we look to retool South Slope, I hope you look at it as a more all-in project where we're not, you know, putting, like I said, tens of millions of dollars into a project and then a couple of years later looking to put new equipment back into it. Let's, you know, if we could possibly try to get it all done in one, one fell swoop. And if there's a rate adjustment for that, then it can all be done at one time.
So, Tony, I have a question for you. Is this, is an example of one of the options communicated in the directors? Or the city administrators? I'm trying to find, Marty?
The council report.
Yeah, is that one of the options? That press that, I think it's a dewatering press for North Slope. It was like a test.
Yeah, screw press is one of the options. There are centrifuges, but a screw press is, seems to be the leader out of the gate at this point.
What is the cost of that equipment? I just want to make sure that this is a reasonable study investment.
Yeah, the cost of that equipment is, we have two presses at North Slope. And so we would need to replace them because of their criticality. They would be on the order of four hundred to four hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So we're putting four, fifty thousand dollars into a study for a five hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment?
Two five hundred thousand dollars.
Some million dollars. Okay.
Yes. And then it'll also inform a decision on what equipment we will ultimately use at South Plant also.
Well, wouldn't we just naturally use the same equipment? Otherwise, that'd be kind of silly, right?
Not necessarily.
Because of the different amount of solids coming out of each?
Right, the different quality of solids at North Slope is completely different than South Slope.
And this study will address both of those unique situations?
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Tony. The next item is yield sign at Twenty-first Avenue and Fourteenth Street. Joe Kulabak?
Hello, your honor. Thank you. Counsel, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. The traffic engineering committee received a request from Alderman Parker to review the current signage at the intersection of Fourteenth Street and Twenty-first Avenue. That meeting was held on July seventh. The committee made a, made and approved a motion to replace those yield signs with stop signs. This replacement of these stop signs is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. There are, there are multiple two-way stops, some four-way stops, but no yields. So this, this change would, would correlate with the rest of the neighborhood and make things consistent throughout. Staff recommended approval of this change.
Motion to approve Parker. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this? I have a question for you, but I don't think it's really for Joe. Is JD Sheltie on the call?
Yes, mayor. Yes, I'm here.
JD, could you help me add a question come to me today about why these things are coming up to the council? Can you tell me the history of that? Because I don't think we had historically seen things come from traffic committee up to the council for final decision. What's, what's going on there?
The ones that have, that require change in ordinance like in these that we can replace those yield signs in exchange for the stop signs, but they'll, they'll be codified in a different place in ordinance. So they have to come, they have to come before you to make those changes.
Thank you for explaining that. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is also Joe's. One-way Sixteenth Street Alley.
Thank you, your honor. During the same traffic committee meeting, the city had reconstructed an alley there where this, where this change is going. And during that construction, a lot of our engineering techs had conversed with the residents and they had voiced their concerns about two-way traffic on that alley, how difficult it can be, just their overall challenges with the, with the way it goes on that particular stretch. Another issue with this one that we looked at is Ninth Avenue parking is very tight. It's a one-way street. Those residents utilize that parking a lot and prior to, and currently, we have some no parking signs there so that our utility trucks can make the turn out of that alley onto Ninth Street to continue their routes. Staff is recommending that we change that alley to a northbound one-way and remove the no parking signs on Ninth Avenue, giving us this north, this northbound one-way. We'd have plenty of room for, for truck traffic and in and out egress. And it's a, this is just a change that was kind of really more or less pervaded to us by the, by the residents while we were on-site construction. So staff recommends approval of a one-way on this alley.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron.
Second.
A second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Joe. The next item will be presented by Carol Barnes. Twenty twenty B bond refinancing.
Thank you, your honor. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Due to favorable interest rates, the city has the opportunity to refinance our Series Two Thousand and Twelve F taxable general obligation refunding bond for a savings upward of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the remaining four years of the life of the bond. The final term of the original issue will remain the same at November first, two thousand and twenty-four. And the attached illustrated savings in your packet assume the true interest cost of one point one two percent and the savings are all net of issuance cost. The total par value of the bond is two million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And as we talked here a week or two ago, due to the smaller size and the shorter term of the issue, we are recommending a private placement with banking institutions. And all of our local banks that we normally do business with as far as investing and whatnot, they are on the list and are being offered a chance to bid on the bond, along with many other non-local banks. And a copy of the term sheet that will be used to place the bid is enclosed in your packets as well. And the ordinance as attached is being introduced pending the results of the sale on August third. And final adoption of this ordinance will occur on August fourth, following the sale. Under section two dash one, 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 zero, the affirmative vote requires six members of council for a final adoption of this bond ordinance. And then I'd like to also say that the projected savings will be divided between the water, stormwater and CIP funds.
Motion to approve Parker.
We have a, a motion to approve, who's staff's recommendation. Alderman Parker?
Second.
Second, Schoonmaker.
A second by Alderman Schoonmaker. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams? Alderman Waldron? Thank you. Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Motion carries. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
The next three items are associated with each other. They all have to do with the digital equity funding coming from our COVID nineteen funds. Jerk price.
Yes, thank you, mayor. That's well said. That's exactly it. This is the three contracts. There's some urgency to this because Moline announced their back-to-school plan, I think, this week. Or, and that depends heavily on remote learning, even under the hybrid model. So the first agreement up, the school district board has already approved. This is the sub-recipient agreements based on the CDBG HUD forms. Shout out to KJ and Jeff for helping me draft what HUD needs for this. So the school district agreement is up, then will be the similar agreement with Project Now, with our project head start and seniors. And then the medium comm agreement, which is providing the modems for that part of the access that we're leasing. So I'm recommending approval and because of the urgency for the timing, I've asked for consideration for it to be at tonight on council.
Motion to approve Parker.
Motion to approve, Parker?
Second.
Went?
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discretion on this item? Roll call.
Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Item seven, Mayor, the Project Now agreement. The only difference here is in addition to leasing the, the modems for the folks that are identified as a low and moderate income, those who don't have an ability to have a device that then uses the internet, we've got, in your appropriation of the COVID money, you've allocated some money for equipment and Project Now is also helping us manage that inventory. So that's the addition in the Project Now. Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
And then item eight is the Medium Comm. Again, the explanation, I sent out a corrected one. My apologies for having the wrong number in there. Media Comm's contract is not to exceed seventy-seven, seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. That's comprised of sixty thousand dollars worth of modems leased for the, through the school district and then another sixteen thousand, four forty leased for Head Start and Seniors. The other part of the thirty-nine thousand that makes up the Project Now is the equipment thing I just mentioned. So correcting the Media Comm agreement, it's worth seventy-six, four forty.
Move to approve, Went?
Second.
We have a motion by Went and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion? Alderman Parker?
So a question regarding the actual modems. First of all, what happens if they get lost? Who's responsible for replacement of those? Or is Media Comm eating that? Or are we going to have to come up with the money?
So our two administrators are responsible for tracking the inventory and getting them back so that if the family leaves, moves out of the district, or moves out of Moline, our two administrators are responsible for getting that back. But if the, if the modem is destroyed or lost, we're on the hook initially and then we can take what action we need to with the people who, who lost it to get it back.
Secondly, so thank you for that. Secondly, what is the plan or do we have any kind of plan after the first initial year? You know, it's great to give them digital, give people digital equity for that first year. Do we have a plan going forward so that we don't just yank that away from them after they become dependent upon that?
Well, we don't. This is, the, the entire proposal was of using funds available to the city as a result of COVID that made remote learning essential and then also the use of remote interviews for jobs, remote payment of bills. And the idea is that after a year, we're hoping that the vaccine or the treatment will be sufficient, that people will not be as dependent on it. And so while I understand that it's hard to take something that's enabled people and helped them, part of the idea is, and then using the COVID funds, is that there won't be the urgent need for COVID-related reasons to do it. If there is still that need, one would think there'd be additional funding coming from the administration similar to they're talking about now and we could renew it then. It's a year at a time for this. That's the same way the school district works with the devices for those families. We always have to check in to make sure they're low and moderate income. That restriction's always there. So we hope that some people will move along and do better and maybe not be still in the low and moderate income. So all I can tell you is that there isn't a plan. It's going to have to be taken on the facts as they exist a year from now.
Thank you.
Alderman Went?
To piggyback off of Alderman Parker's question, do we know, and I apologize, it's probably in the agreement and I didn't see it, what each modem costs? Like what are we potentially on the hook for? And do we have any, and I know it's a dart in the dark, any suspicion on what our breakage rate or, or loss rate is going to be on the number that we do? You know, how many do we think we'll lose? And do we have sufficient funds budgeted to, to cover that loss?
Well, we don't, I don't have a breakage rate or a loss rate. The school district has indicated that on their side, for example, they've had good success with tracking the devices they hand out now to students of low and moderate income to be able to use e-learning. They just didn't have enough of them. That's why we partnered with them here. And so to get the equipment back. While we budgeted for up to 500 families in the school district, at present, we don't think we're going to use that. So we have a little bit of cushion in the COVID funds to absorb some of those impacts for loss or other related things. In, in some respects, we have insurance for this, also if it ever got to anything that extreme. But I think within the COVID funds, we have enough of a cushion to absorb any impact. And they don't give a per modem price, but this isn't their most sophisticated modem. It's designed to achieve a basic internet access for a couple of users in a household. This isn't, you know, the high-speed Xfinity, lightning-fast fiber optic modem. So I think we're going to be okay.
I think if my recollection is right, and KJ's not in the room anymore, is she? I think that there's, when you get into the different items and the overall, I think we have 479,000 allocated to us, that you can flex the individual items. So we'll probably have some cushion in some of the other areas when we get, get at the point where we've got to reclaim these modems. My guess is that there should still be some in the rental program or in the other programming that we have available because usually those are over-under to some extent. Are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you, Dirk. We do not have another this evening, so we're going to go right into the informationals. The first informational is by Chief Galt, sole source purchase authorization for modification of the body worn camera, Axon Enterprises Incorporated Service Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. First, I'd like to introduce you, or reintroduce you to Captain Brian Johnson. He's joined me this evening. He's the subject matter expert on the body cam. So he's here, here to answer any additional questions that we have. To start off, just to give a little background, Axon is a vendor that provides our body cameras and fleet cameras and helmet cameras for our police officers and our squad cars. Axon has a proprietary integrated system and all of those things work together and also with a software system that was purchased by the City of Moline on a five-year contract two years ago. So this is a sole source authorization and I wanted to walk you through some aspects of this because it involves extending the contract to defer some money to help the budget next year. So to give you a little bit of background, I have a presentation here. We have fleet cameras in the squad cars and there's 30 vehicles with front and backseat video. Those video does take up a lot of space and of course, our IT manager, Don Goff, really appreciates that that does not lie on the city servers. That is a cloud-based video system. We have unlimited storage and we will get new hardware. As you can see in the lower left, that camera that mounts to the ceiling of this interior squad car in the backseat. Part of the contract has a technology assistance program. We'll get new equipment at the third, end of the third year of that contract. In addition, we have body worn cameras. All of our police officers, from Jeannie, the, from the youngest to me, the most senior in the range, have body worn cameras that are assigned to them and these are the squares. And you can see the square that I have in my hand today is a little different than the one that's up there on the screen because those are the new ones that we will receive on the refresh, body worn camera version three. We have unlimited storage. We have document stations that download the video from the unit as well as charge them. We have warranties that also give us new equipment at 2.5 in five years. And then Evidence.com is the cloud-based software and licenses for both those technology. So a brief background of body cameras is that the Moline Police Department entered into an agreement with Axon in 2018 for a five-year contract for body worn cameras and fleet vehicle camera systems at a cost of 135,848 dollars per year. I've been exploring ways since COVID hit and we, we talked about the budget and the impacts of this year's budget, potentially future budgets, when I was working with Interim City Administrator Schulte at the time, how I, we could be creative. And so I was exploring this contract and we, I found a way that we could defer $100,000 out of this contract. And I want to be transparent. This is not saving any money. It's a deferment. But I think it's advantageous to us, so I'll show you that in a minute. So here, this is going to be a little bit complicated because the contracts don't match up exactly because in year one of 2018, we had some hardware purchases that we had to make. But in general, if you add the year two, we see it's 49,5 and 86,3. If you add those together, it's 135. So on average, every year costs us $135,000 and that's budgeted for this year. That total contract was $700,000. We also, about a year into that, purchased helmet cameras. And as, as all good presenters try to do is bring visual aids. Captain Johnson has a tactical team helmet. These cameras have, or these officers that are assigned to this unit that do our high-risk entries, I have an additional small camera that's on the side of that and it clips into the back of the body camera on the back of their helmet. So that was an additional $5,328 a year and we, we've already prepaid for that on a federal match grant. So that's all, that's done. That's prepaid. So I'm going to skip over to the right side of that. We're proposing to rewrite the contract for 2020 through 2024. That would extend the contract two years. And what Axon is willing to do is defer $101,000 out of the 2021 budget and only charges $33,000 in exchange for breaking that up and deferring it to year four and year five of, of a contract. Now you've noticed that would add two years to our contract. So to try to make the math simple here, 100 on the left, the current contract, 135,800 over five years is 679,000. Now that doesn't match up, you probably would first say. That doesn't match up with this number here because remember, we had some hardware expenses in year one. So. There we go. Adding in the helmet cam contract, it brings us to 705,881. Looking to the right side, 2020 to 2024, they're going to ask us to pay 136 this year. It's a little bit more, just 100 or 200 dollars. For five years is 680. The helmet cams now will be in that contract over five years. So we're going to get that on the same schedule for replacement. We have to add in a fleet license for year four and year five because that's new. That brings us to 700,000 and Axon has given us a credit for what we've already paid, prepaid for the helmet cams of 13,223 for our total contract of 687,658 from 2020 through the 2024 budget that would take us to July of 2025. So simpler spreadsheet here to compare. Our old contract is 705 with the five years at 135 plus the helmet cams versus below 136 over five years plus the fleet licenses in the last two years. And a credit for the helmet cams brings us to 687. So I, I, again, I want to be, be clear that I, I don't want to represent this as saving money. It's not saving money by any means. Actually, you see, it's going to cost us about $8,000 to extend the helmet cam contract. But it allows, it gives us $101,000 relief out of next year's budget. Initially, I had scheduled that for this year and speaking with Interim City Administrator Fox, we decided that it would be better to move that out of next year's budget to give us that relief out of the unknown for the COVID situation next year. So it would relieve that 101,000 out of, of next year's budget and we would break that up in 2023 and 2024. So you see our payments in those two years. Hopefully, the economy will be rebounded by then. It gives us that one year in 2022 to just remain stagnant. And then bump up in those last two years would be get to 687. And I have a small math error there. I, I had the sensor off on my spreadsheet. So I'm at $1 off there, apologize. So you'll see, I did a running total of how this is different, the old contract, the new contract. And Alderman Scoonmaker is probably cringing at my, my poor spreadsheet here. I'm not a math guy, but I wanted you to see apples to apples comparison here a little bit. And so the $8,000 difference, it really, so there's a technology warranty in on the helmet cams. Remember, I told you we're getting a credit back. But then we're going in two more years. So it kind of depends on how you look at it, you know, it could be, but it really, the difference kind of comes down to about the, the extra $6,000 a year we pay for the helmet cams minus the, the credit that we're rolling into this contract. So we have a couple of options. We actually have three options and I, I should have labeled one as option zero because I don't think you'd like that. And that would be to cancel the contract altogether, get out of body cams. I think my guess, speaking to staff and attorney price and risk management, is we don't want to get away from body cams. So I left that off. So the other one option is we could just leave it alone and just continue on our normal contract through 2022 and pay our 135 for the remaining three years, including this year. Or we can take up the option of rewriting the contract and extending it two years. And, and we would roll those in together. And so I ran this by attorney price. He reviewed the contract, the terms, the summary of payments and city administrator. And we'd like to move forward with the sole source authorizations to rewrite this contract and extend it to 2024.
So your recommendation is option number three? Or you're just asking for some direction? I guess we don't really have an action item.
It's more informational. We started this with J.D. The sole source procurement is really, doesn't require counsel action. But as with J.D.'s other one earlier, we don't feel comfortable just sole sourcing it and not informing you what's going on.
I understand.
And so we're just looking to make sure there isn't an objection from a majority of counsel to the proposed plan that the chief has presented to market. It's important enough, not only is it a policy about body cameras and how we're doing policing in Moline, particularly in the national conversation right now, but these are, you know, enough zeros here to be real estate and also a budget impact for next year. So that's the plan to move forward, doesn't require counsel approval as much as counsel consensus.
So I guess instead of like thinking about it in a voting perspective, does anyone have any questions or comments about what the, what the staff is doing? Alderman Went?
Thank you, your honor. While I, I'm in support of body cameras and, and I think that it is a beneficial for, for risk management and telling the true story of, of what happens at the scene of things. I guess my question is, in light of everything that's going on and my guess, more communities maybe looking at instituting these, I'm wondering about, you know, what is the price point of these things over the next couple of years? Are they going to maybe go down as, as more people enter into the market and, and all of those things? And so I, I'd like a couple of, of questions answered. One, for similar communities, our size, what is their raw dollar that they're spending on body camera, these sorts of things? And also, how does that compare to as a percentage of their total budget? If we could kind of get that, I, I just want to kind of understand how we compare to other similar communities on how much of our budget we're spending on this? on this particular portion of our enforcement and those sorts of things. And also, while we're reaching out to those communities, kind of get a feel for, you know, what's the length of time that they have for their contracts? What do those dollars look like into future years? Is the price going up or is the price going down? I'd really like to see that and maybe, as you had, option zero was canceling the contract, what happened if we wound up going out and rebidding it right now? Maybe there's other places out there that there may be a cost savings there. Those are just questions, I'm not advocating that. I just think before signing on for those two additional years, I know we're saving money this year or next year, but saddling with an extra, you know, $54,000 for those two years, you know, that's another, you know, new officer or something like that. So I think that that's something that we need to take into consideration.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn. Chief stepped away for a second. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, so a couple of things regarding to your question about will technology, this technology price point go down? So what we've seen so far is no, the technology price point will go up. And I can tell you that the technology that Axon is planning on rolling out in the next two years will go up partly because they are adding in license plate readers and additional features into the new technology that's already onboard and planned for future rolling. So we know that Axon will be more expensive. Your question about, you know, bidding it out and looking for other options, while that is true, there are other vendors that do participate in this space. Axon has proven to be the leader in this space. They already have it integrated in our squads, in our body cams and helmet cams. We also have their TASER product, they're the leader in that. And there is a big difference in the video technology and a price point drop-off. And without boring with a lot of those details, there's video compression rates, frame rate loss. There is a little bit of a, there's a lot of get what you pay for in technology when it comes to body cameras. And there's been a lot of ones that aren't recommended that are even out on the market. So Axon has proven to be the leader in all of our partner cities in the area have gone on to Axon. Rock Island has Axon, Rock Island County, Mylan just received theirs. So their neighboring cities are also jumping onboard with the Axon technology. It's a proven reliable company and I can say, and maybe Captain Johnson wants to, as well, is that the customer service with Axon has been phenomenal.
So just to add to Chief's point, Alderman Wynn, I don't know if you recall, part of the sole source agreement from 2018 when we initially went with Axon was directly related to the integration that we had with Rock Island County State's Attorney's Office. We had the ability to do all of our information sharing directly with them, which was one of the reasons that we went with procurement from Axon, was basically the ease of information sharing. Like the chief touched on with the agencies in the local area, we could just click a button, send videos and that was substantial cost savings for us. We're no longer burning videos anymore, we're no longer burning DVDs on the discs and then taking them to other agencies and stuff like that. So just wanted to refresh your memory there on one of the reasons that we did the sole source initiative.
And we've also expanded that to receive video, cell phone videos and things from customers. They have a, what's the name of it? Citizen Pro feature, partly in the coronavirus world, to receive that information, digital technology, and then we can send it out. So it's safe staff time. But I can check in to see what the other, like Rock Island's paying. I can tell you that sometimes it's difficult. And what I had to do for you tonight was trying to make it an apples-to-apples comparison of what, you know, how many docking stations and, you know, so it does become a little bit of a catch-22 there on some of those comparisons.
Alderman Waldron?
I want to thank the captain and yourself, Chief, on the creative thinking. And my is option three.
Option three. Is there anyone that is concerned about moving forward with option three? Alderman Parker?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what Alderman Waldron said at all. I cut out.
Alderman Waldron, can you repeat yours?
I just wanted to thank staff for the creative thinking and I think I'm for option three.
Alderman Parker?
Yeah, I think, excuse me, I agree with Alderman Waldron, Alderman Waldron, that option three is a great idea. Question, Chief, try to refresh me. So the cost of all of this, does this come straight out of the general fund? Or do we have grants that go for it? Or does like the automobile piece come out of fleet? How do we fund this?
So we did receive a grant from the state of Illinois for the equipment, but the ongoing fees are in our line item budget.
And that comes straight out of the general fund?
That is correct. So to my knowledge, there aren't any grants for the ongoing use of the technology, but there was for equipment and we did receive maybe about 86 to $90,000 grant for the equipment.
Does any of this come out of the fleet reserves? I mean, a lot of the cameras and stuff are located inside of the vehicle?
I'd have to defer to fleet on that, but currently it is, it is in my budget as a budgeted item for this year. I'm not sure the rules on the fleet reserves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for sharing this information with us. It's helpful to understand. The next item is also Chief Galt's Social Worker Services Collaboration Project with the police department.
Well, thank you again. Another short, hopefully a little bit shorter presentation for you. But I wanted to bring you up to speed on some things that I've been working on over the last seven weeks. I was here before you about three or four weeks ago and I gave a speech about the commitment the Moline Police Department had to our community and the dialogue and the engagement that we were, that I was specifically involved in with our community members and key leaders in different spaces. And one of those areas of dialogue that I've had extensive discussion with is social services. And so, over the last few weeks, I've had deep discussions with various social service agencies. And those of you, I know some have experience with social services in the Quad Cities area, it's very fractionalized. A lot of players in the space, a lot of people do different things, some of them overlap things, some of them are funded by state contracts, some of them are nonprofits. I just got another letter from one today that I hadn't heard of before in overlapping services. And so it's kind of fractionalized a little bit. And there's a little bit of a lack of coordination. There's not an easy button to push to activate social services. And so I'll talk about that in a minute, but how are we going to get wraparound services? In my discussions with a lot of these social service agencies, they were really surprised at how much social service work we were really doing on a daily basis, even at 2:00 in the morning. And so I had some really good conversations with the Center for Youth and Family Solutions, Family Resources, Bethany at Quad Cities, QC Open Network, Clock Inc., and a few others. But Center for Youth and Family Solutions was very interested in getting onboard and partnering with us right away. And we're looking at doing this as early as August 17. And what we found, you know, good police officers stealing stuff here, I stole this from a social worker, these slides here in the National Association of Social Workers, there's some types of social problems that are really overlapping in responsibility, family matters, criminal offenses, mental health services, domestic violence and so on. I won't read all those, but you know, tasks and functions of police social working, it's varied. But in general, we're dealing with crisis intervention, right? We deal with crisis. That is the business that we're in. And it's also the business that social services are in a lot and in some senses do it better than us, especially on short and long-term counseling. So I engaged a colleague, friend of mine, Tony Gordon, this is the chief operating officer at the Center for Youth and Family Solutions. And I said, how can we do this better? How can we partner better to serve the community? And I proposed to him co-locating social services inside the Moline Police Department. And I thought he was gonna fall off his cherry, you know, no one had approached him about that before. And he said, this is really interesting. How would you see this? And so I gave him this potential three-prong approach. I said, do you think we could provide a 24/7 response, expand that past the Myras, the Runaways, the Lockouts, and do this for more areas of social services? And could we also do diversion, meaning that we get those people out of the criminal justice system into some sort of a social services treatment program or partnership? And could we also have an intervention? Could police and social work partner and try to get to somebody and mitigate problems before they become a long-term delinquent or they have future cases, including school issues? And that's gonna be important in a minute. And so we've been collaborating almost weekly, if not more, over the last six to seven weeks. And Center for Youth and Family Solutions came back with a proposal to integrate this in a couple of different phases. And I've engaged Dirk and some memorandums of understanding drafts and we were exploring all the legal liabilities and all that stuff. And he's working on that. We've got one floating out there with their legal division right now. But phase one, we could go into right away because they're already in this space, but we're gonna enhance collaboration in serving target populations for youth. It's fairly easy for us to get this going. They already have that in their funding and their contracts. It's already law under state law, the Juvenile Court Act, pretty seamless. Phase two, we hope to expand to populations to serve youth, adults and families in a more comprehensive model of service. That might take a little bit more work with some privacy issues and some differences with adults and consents and things like that. But we're working on that and we're very optimistic that that will come to fruition sooner than later. So there's been some consultants that have worked in this project. Kate Lally, a professor at St. Ambrose University is currently on staff with Center for Youth and Family Solutions. This also has experience with, sorry, the Yale model in Connecticut, where she was actually embedded with the police department in this program in Connecticut. And so she's very familiar with it, very supportive of where we're going with this project. Christian Myers, a clinical supervisor with Center for Youth and Family Solutions is working on phase two. And I've also reached out to a friend of mine, Dr. Regina Matheson at St. Ambrose University, who runs the social work program over there. We're brainstorming and doing some ideas. But really, this is their space, right? This is social services expertise and I'm inviting them in. We're not really gonna do a lot different other than work better with them, have them in our building so that we can provide better services. So the program logistics, having 24/7 crisis response staff of Center for Youth and Family Solutions, not our staff. I'm not asking to bring these people on to the payroll of the Moline Police Department. These are Center for Youth and Family Solutions employees that will be co-located at our facility. They'll be working closely with our juvenile division, our school resource officers. Staff can be available to be at schools with the SROs. I talked to Dr. Savage today at Moline School, Moline College School District. Very excited about this program. We mentioned it last week in our proposal to purchase the trailer that the mayor brought forward and using some available funding for that to try to get out to these students that are displaced from the new remote learning project and not being able to be in person five days a week. We're suspecting that there's gonna be more issues as we move forward in a longer-term setting with that. So we're hopeful that that could be a partnership of a teacher, an SRO, and a social worker in the field trying to be in an intervention method. And we'd be staffing the prioritized cases. So this next is very long and I won't read it all. This is their protocol that they propose. But basically, it comes down to response, consultation and follow-up. And I can tell you right now, where we're lacking is the follow-up. And they were shocked at how many cases that we had that we would go to. And I'm gonna be honest with you, a police officer is going and dealing with crisis and trying to solve it in about 40 minutes, putting a band-aid on it and leaving. And really, we're not allowing that to heal underneath, right? We've just solved the problem temporarily. And a lot of, I don't think we're connecting social services in the ways that we can. And so we're hoping that the follow-up that this will provide us will be beneficial to the community. So what are the next steps? We have small work groups that are collaborating with the police department and the staff at CYFS. And their plan is to begin this in mid-August. As I mentioned before, Dirk is working on a MOU for co-location. And then I've also been working with QC Open Network. And if any of you are familiar with QC Open Network, we call them an umbrella, right? They're trying to bring all of these social services in under kind of a model and they're located at Bridgepoint here in Moline where they can receive referrals and then get them to the right place. I'm gonna call that the easy button, which I told you in slide one, didn't exist. They have a platform, an IRIS platform. We also have an MOU floating out there between that open network and us to try to get a part of the IRIS platform so that police officer can hit that easy button and refer somebody through QC Open Network. And the professionals on that end will receive that, evaluate it, and then send it on to the right social services for follow-up. I also have ongoing discussions with Family Resources. I've met the director. They have a lot of things going on with some research and some other things, but they're on the Illinois side, they pretty much specialize in victim services. And so I think we're also gonna end up having some good partnership and maybe even some co-location with them on victim services or some sort of model there. And then I already mentioned to you that we're working on that, the trailer project that we talked about last week. So really just wanted to bring you up to date on how we're trying to move forward and trying to provide a better service, more efficient service to our community and to be realistic with some of the understanding of what the community has asked historically of police departments to do that we're not doing as well as we could. And we feel, I feel passionately that our partners in the social service space can help us out, can do and do a great job, and we just need to kind of clean out that coordination. One of the things you might ask is why do we need co-location? Why do they have to be at the police department? And while we just have found that the virtual platform doesn't work, that when we can sit across from each other and share information and get that case to someone and say, hey, what do you think about this? Well, we have a service. I've learned so much over the last seven weeks about services that I didn't even know existed in the Quad Cities. And so that's kind of the 30,000-foot view. A lot of details that survive underneath. And I think this is just gonna get better as we move forward. So I don't entertain any questions, but I wanted to at least let you know that that was going on in your city.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Waldron?
I think it's a wonderful idea, a wonderful program. My only question would be maybe for Dirk, is by co-locating, is there any exposure for us for liability?
There's always risk in doing any sort of partnership, but we're making it clear that we are not providing any professional social work advice and they're not doing any policing. And so we're covering that in the best way possible and then trying to take full advantage of where the immunity acts kick in for us to do the work we're doing and the work they're doing. And as long as we adhere to what we're agreeing, which is we don't give professional psychological or social advice in that sense, and they don't try and do any police work, we should be okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much for this presentation. I think this is great and I think that, you know, I think the fact that over years, so many things have just kind of been pushed off onto police to cover, to do, and the scope has grown exponentially over the years, that partnering with these professionals that really know how to service and take care of some of these especially niche social service issues that they're better suited to take on, I think is a great first step. And I really hope we can build on this. So thank you very much for starting this process and I'm looking forward to it growing over time.
Are there any other comments? Thank you so much, Chief. Oh, sorry, Alderman Parker, did you have a comment?
Just wanted to say, great work, Chief.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for leading in this. Thank you for leading in this. The next item will be presented by Marty Vonix. Quad City First and the Quad City Chamber merger.
I think I'll come up here.
Please.
I didn't have a slideshow. Next time I'll have the chief make me one. So as you know, two weeks ago, the Quad Cities First organization, which was an organization affiliated with Chamber of Commerce, decided to dissolve and merge with Quad City Chamber of Commerce. And yesterday, the Quad Cities Chamber of Commerce also took those steps and voted to merge. Under the new plan, the Chamber will do work with the regional economic development community. They'll accept transfer of that service agreement in this community, the other communities signed two years ago, according to their plans. Now, the city of Moline was the sole no vote during this process, and we did not agree with the structure or process for the transfer of funds to the Chamber for a variety of reasons, which I think I've discussed with you in the past. And under the new structure, the Chamber did agree to segregate public sector funds and not use them for advocacy or chamber overhead, and only use those funds for business development and attraction purposes. And although we didn't agree to the terms agreement, we still have a role to play, I think. And I think we can still be at the table to monitor the situation and hold the Chamber accountable. So therefore, I believe we should continue to participate in the Chamber's economic development activity for the final year of the service contract, but closely monitor performance and activity. And in one year, we can reassess the situation, or during the course of the year, we can choose not to participate as well. So while I do this, I recommend we work to develop an alternative plan that should we choose not to renew our agreement, and we have a plan of action in place to conduct and manage economic development in the city of Moline. The alternative plan could include a number of things, which I've outlined to you in the past. But this also works, this will also include working closely with our neighboring communities to develop these plans and eventually execute a strategy that makes sense and works for those. So my plan, with your approval and direction, would be to authorize the payment of the final year of the economic development funding to the new organization, or a part of the Chamber of Commerce, really. Participate in their meetings, closely monitor their performance, report back to the council progress or lack thereof, and at the same time, explore new functional collaborations with our fellow my neighbors, DCEO, other economic stakeholders in the greater Moline area, and to prepare for the potential withdrawal of the city's support to the Chamber's economic development efforts moving forward. And, but again, those options are available to us as an independent city, and we don't have to necessarily follow this plan. So I believe some recommendation would be in order or direction for me to move forward with that plan. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Marty? Alderman Parker.
Thank you, Marty. So how much is this that we're going to be sending to the Chamber? Do you recommend?
It's $60,000.
I have a real hard time, can I follow up?
Yes, please.
Personally, I have a real hard time sending the Chamber any money due to the fact that we've, you know, their past behaviors with the Main Street Commission when they were running that organization, plus their lack of responsiveness and help in trying to do anything on the Illinois side of the river. Every time I watch television and the Chamber's on there, it has something to do with the Downtown Davenport Association, the Downtown Bettendorf Association. And I just don't want to funnel our residents' money over to the Chamber to help another community. As much as I want them to succeed, I want to be sure that we get the best bang for the buck. And so if we send $1 to the Chamber out of this, I think it's $1 too many personally.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I have a question for you, Marty.
Yes.
So as this transition has happened, has there been any staffing changes at the Chamber that would impact economic development or recruitment or attraction to the Quad Cities?
Nothing to speak of that I think has impact. Liz Tallman moved to the Rock Island DARI organization. She took a job there. So they just basically eliminated a staff member and shuffled some people around.
So wasn't she the lead in economic development and attraction?
Yeah, she was the lead, yeah. But I have personally no way, other than some of the records that we have, to measure her real effectiveness, so.
Okay.
But I think, my experience in economic development, I think I can keep their feet to the fire if we were to move forward.
So if, what do you think is the biggest risk for us in the transition? And how can we bridge and minimize that risk to the Moline community? What are your thoughts about, what are we doing this year to help address that gap?
I think the risk is that they don't carry out what they say they're going to do. The problem with many economic development organizations, I think, is they love to provide a big plate of food. You know, they're going to do all these things. And it's hard to execute, particularly in these times with, you know, they have limited resources, they have limited staff. And so that's difficult to do. But, you know, in some sense, at least somebody's doing something. I and the staff we have, we can't go out and do site location consultant visits or other things at this time. Maybe in the future, we could, but today, we can't. So from that perspective, it's good that they're doing some things. They are, you know, promoting the region. And again, the people that are looking at the Quad Cities don't look at boundaries. Our job is to make sure that T number 7 and the land by the airport is ready for development, that downtown has got buildings and it's ready for development. That's our job. So, you know, they bring the clients, we can serve them. So I'm not sure I answered your question, but the biggest risk is them not performing. But I think with my experience in analogy in economic development, we can keep their feet to the fire pretty hard.
And so you had mentioned that. What are the metrics that you look at to determine if they're effective or not, so we can reevaluate at the end of the year?
I think at the, and they're going to come up with their own metrics, but mostly, it's how many calls are they making? How effective are those calls? Who are they calling? How many leads are we getting? We have a job to do as a staff to respond to those calls for leads, so we need to, I think, up our game a little bit there. So it's a matter of making sure that what they say they're going to do, they're going to do. Now, basically, they're taking their work service agreement that they had with Quad Cities First and just transferring it to the Chamber. So that hasn't changed so much. So, you know, I can go in and dig in, and even my discussions with Paul Rumler, you know, he's asked me to weigh in on whether some of that stuff is effective. So I think we can build a good relationship there. And I think, but you know, Alderman Parker, I understand your concerns. The history hasn't been good, and I can go either way. We know we can set up an organization as well, so that's an option.
Thank you. Alderman Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am supportive, and I believe in our community, the Quad Cities in our area, that a regional approach to development is needed. When you have kind of individual factions, I think that they get played against each other quite a bit. And I think that the sum of the parts is worth more than the individual units kind of whistling in the wind. And so I think you can have more effect by grouping together and speaking in one voice for our region. And, you know, if jobs come in, whether they're placed in Moline or they're placed in Rock Island and Davenport, the hope is that that rising tide lifts all ships. But that being said, I do appreciate Alderman Parker's concerns regarding some past history and the approach that the Chamber has had between Iowa and Illinois. I do have some concerns on what their past effectiveness has been, and some of that is shame on us that we have not and did not hold their feet to the fire. We were not, I don't think diligent in making sure that they were meeting all the criteria of the agreements that we had entered into with them. And so, all things being equal, I would rather stay in this for this year. They've made a lot of promises on how this is going to move forward and how much more effective it was going to be. It'll give us rights as an internal participant in this to, as they've promised, to see books, to see reports and what they've done. And I think that we stay on that. They're supposed to provide those quarterly. We make sure that those happen. I think Marty, with his background and expertise, can really tell us if they're meeting what they've sold us. I think we can also then communicate that to the other communities that are spending taxpayer money on this. And if they're, if they step up and meet it, terrific. But if not, that Marty makes sure that that is communicated not only to us, but to our neighboring communities. And we either have him, coach him up or coach him out, and at that point, make our decision when the, because everybody's going to have to renegotiate a new deal a year from now.
Thank you, Alderman Went. And I'd like to echo Alderman Went's idea of the accountability and the enforcement of the accountability. And so I'd like to suggest, Marty, that maybe we could have Janine add informationals to, for the next quarters, each quarter, to automatically add an informational as a reminder that we're going to get an update on their performance regarding.
Your Honor, can I add to that?
Alderman Scoonmaker.
I agree with both Alderman Went and Alderman Parker. I can see both sides of that. I am greatly concerned, and I think once we write the check, we don't have any control. It seems to me that if we're going to have some reviews of this, maybe we pay this in installments and monitor it closely and make sure that we're actually getting what we're paying for.
Is there any comments from the rest of the council regarding that proposal? Alderman Parker?
Yeah, thank you. So I like that better than just writing them a check and hoping for the best. You know, I like the idea of, you know, promising payments provided they produce some results or some activity. I know results is a difficult thing, but activity. You know, because we've, again, you know, they're not going to, in my mind, their behaviors, unless we see them change, they're going to be what they are. And that is, take the money and provide very little support to us. And, you know, as much as I like the people individually that work there, this isn't a "I like you" situation. It's a "what have you done for us in the past" situation. And their past history has not been necessarily good, in my mind. So, you know, if we do move forward with this, I really like Kevin's, or excuse me, Alderman Scoonmaker's idea of pay for performance.
Alderman Went, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't think that I would have any problem with paying over time. I think that that's a good idea and a good compromise as we move forward for all of us to feel more comfortable with this situation we find ourselves in.
Are you comfortable with that, Marty?
Yeah, I think we can make that work.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for the update. I appreciate that.
I've got guidance, thank you.
Thank you so much. The next item, the next informational item is 1625 Ninth Avenue, Rainbow House. Review of Chapter 35 in the Code of Ordinances. Dirk Price.
Thank you, Mayor. So the mayor and Marty asked me to do a root cause failure analysis here of the citation that was issued as a misapplication of the zoning code to the homeowner for this house in the picture here, actually known as the Rainbow House. And I've looked into it, I've done that. I would tell you that on the day that the zoning officer issued the violation notice, I saw it later that day after he had issued it, and I, this was on the cusp of Pride Month, and I said, "That's got First Amendment overtones, I wouldn't cite it." And as we'll discuss here, it turns out that the way we've used courtesy notices in the past was an invitation to a dialogue, and instead, the focus became, rightly so, the end of the courtesy notice says, "You're going to be fined for a certain amount if you don't correct." And so we've learned a few things here, but I'll try and put this in context to talk about the solutions we've come up with so that it doesn't happen again, and also to orient you to the limits of Moline's power here in terms of, and it's an evolving area of law, and so an education piece for all of us, including this learning moment. So that's the house at issue. But the history of this goes back to January. In January, the neighborhood improvement officer, Brad Howman, not only got complaints from neighbors, but observed it himself that this was the status of that property. That's a violation of our property code. A violation was issued, corrective action wasn't taken by the homeowner, and so we sent in a contractor to remove it. And there's an invoice that's not been paid by the homeowner for having done that. The problem persisted so that in April, we had a second violation with more junk in the yard, another set of property violations by this same homeowner, not corrected. We sent the contractor again and removed more of the refuse. That's illegal. And you can see in the picture, the house is not painted here. That was not taken care of by the homeowner, and the homeowner will be getting another bill from another contractor. And then comes July, where there's more. A third violation issued to the same owner for a third set of problems on the property condition. And now you can see that this property is in the middle of its transformation into the Rainbow House. In the context of the July complaints and the observations, the complaints about the condition of the property came with two others. One concerned illegal activity of a criminal nature possibly on the site, and the other concerned the paint job. And so Brad Howman's jurisdiction is the property condition, but not the possible illegal criminal activity nor the paint job. So he referred them properly to the police department for whatever investigation they might need to do, and to the zoning officer, Chris Mathias, who, in the zoning code, there is a section about design standards. And apparently, there's a history in Moline of having cited somebody for having created a mural on their property, I believe it was a Marine Corps logo, and that was asked to be taken down because staff, I mentioned it, focused right away on the primary colors, because that's what's written in the zoning code. And so the citation was issued about the primary colors not permitted by the zoning code's design standards. That's how we got to Chris's citation. However, the zoning code only applies to new development. And one question council will have to wrestle with is, do you want that? Do you want to continue to have a color requirement for all of Moline? Seems to me that certain neighborhoods or certain areas of town might deserve different colors or different treatments about colors, but that's a policy decision for you to decide. You can send that to plan commission to have them bring you back a text amendment if you want. That's something to keep in mind going forward. But at the moment, we have the issue of the zoning code, it only applies to new developments. Nobody to paint their house has to go to the plan commission to get approval to paint their house. And so one of the learning moments here for Chris, who's new in the job, is walking through, not everything is a zoning problem. Not everything is a plan commission zoning code issue. So we've gone to come up with that, corrected it, got that understanding about what the standards are. However, that's not the end of the story, simply getting the right codes to apply to the right things. We've got to talk about an evolving, emerging area of law, one that I am certain that Alderman Went, and certainly wasn't in my law school class, but it's called mural law. It's an evolving area of law in terms of zoning and property standards. I want to back up a little bit of law school class here. Aesthetics in zoning law has been around for about 70 years, and it reached its zenith, and then it's been tapering off ever since in light of First Amendment and Speech Acts. It began with an old Supreme Court case about the need to have property values protected by aesthetics, but then, of course, you know, what is beautiful is in the eye of the beholder. And so we've been retreating from that as we've improved on the emphasis of values on property ownership and First Amendment rights of expression, limiting the reach of government to stop expression. So here are two recent cases I've got up on the screen for you to see, one from each coast. The house on the left that looks like Van Gogh's Starry Night is from Florida. That family painted that. Their neighbors complained, their city took action. That was defeated and overruled by the court. That artistic expression is a lot, despite the fact that the ordinance of the despite the fact that the ordinance of the city would have prohibited it. On the right is from Manhattan Beach, California. A woman painted her house the bright pink, and she hired an artist to paint the two emojis. The neighbor sued and sued the city to enforce the property code in the city, and everybody lost. That right of expression was also upheld. Here's the issue. So there's a little bit of those elements involved in our own Rainbow House. One, the Rainbow House, particularly on the cusp of Pride Month, the rainbow flag being a symbol of pride for the LGBTQ community, that's going to have First Amendment overtones beginning. Second, apart from its symbolic relationship there, artistic expression is also protected from government interference by the First Amendment. So the question becomes, where's the aesthetic zoning care for property values? Where's that limit? That's a recognized governmental purpose. Where's that limit with respect to the First Amendment? And when it comes to the First Amendment, you have to have superior reasons, not just a rational reason, but you have to have an overwhelming superior reason to do it. And property values isn't going to carry the day. So with respect to the Van Gogh house, for example, they painted it that way because they had a child with special needs who was calmed by Van Gogh's paintings in general. And so doing this to their house calmed him, made him feel better. Those elements are there. And if you've read the newspaper stories about our own Rainbow House, there's some of that involved for her children, that they enjoy the house and that that helps them with some of their concerns and their issues. On the right, that house is a little more complicated. And there's been some of this allegation. It doesn't really matter. But in that house, the evidence was that she had been improperly renting it out as an Airbnb. And that was prohibited by Manhattan Beach. And so when she was turned in by her neighbors and forced to stop being an Airbnb, she painted this. And the neighbors contended that this was done, sticking the tongue out at them, as a retribution for her being turned in for the Airbnb and paying a fine for that. And the court said, "We don't care. You're allowed to do that with your own property, and the government's right doesn't supersede your First Amendment rights of expression." So the mural law, as this has become known, is an evolving area of law, but it's on the side of protecting First Amendment speech. And that's particularly more important now because we have a Supreme Court that's equating commercial speech with political speech. You know, Susie Slots might as well say, "Vote Trump" or "Vote Biden," according to the Supreme Court, because it's all of an equal boundary. And so as we've retreated from the ability of government to regulate any kind of speech, this kind of stuff is in our future. It's going to happen. And our no primary colors is unlikely to survive any challenge, regardless of whether it's actually in favor of some symbolic reason or some symbol that has First Amendment overtones. The right of artistic expression is on the rise, and your power to control it or limit it is on the wane. And I would say to you, remembering that they're calling this mural law, particularly in a city that just celebrated a mural that people are taking, Alderman Went's children are taking pictures in front of. You have murals here that you are celebrating and that you are creating with more public art. So the idea that you're going to be free from primary colors when you're celebrating paying for and enabling murals in town, that's also going to be a problem. So one of the things you're going to need to look at is whether you want to ask that of new developers. You have more latitude to ask it of people coming to you asking for new development rights that they don't have. But the question is, do you want to continue to do that? So that's how we got to where we are. And those are the First Amendment restrictions and rules in the background. What we've learned from it is that we've talked to Chris, talked to Brad, talked to Paul Griswold. We're going to collaborate on some of those code issues to make sure we're not running into some of these same First Amendment expression issues going forward. We're going to balance the complaints. I mean, remember, we got started here because the neighbors were, and Brad was correctly observing property code violations. The owner had a problem. The owner wasn't correcting. And, but we need to balance that with evidence. And we're going to kind of reform our courtesy notice because we're trying to involve, like, Chris's instinct is right. Let's involve a conversation with the owner about this. But then threatening a fine at the bottom is counterproductive. And in that way, that was what was emphasized here, is the heavy handedness of the city focused rather than on the invitation to a conversation. It was the threatened fine, which is frankly infringing on First Amendment rights of expression. The threat of a fine is an infringement. Now, the good news here is the owner has suffered no damages. We've not fined them. She's not been, we rescinded the notice. We're moving forward. She's got her own property code issues to comply with. But we fixed this soon enough and quick enough that we haven't asked her to repaint a square inch of her building. So while it's a problem, it's one that's corrected, and it didn't have an actual damage. And then the last business is, when we get complaints, we, you know, people are trying to be responsive at the staff level to the complaints we get from the neighbors about the property conditions around them. We've invested a lot of time and money recently in the Neighborhood Improvement Goal, how we're going to have enforcement strategies around that. That's all really important, and we're not going to go away from that. But from time to time, as I reminded Brad and Chris today, we're going to have to remind the citizens complaining is not, we can't solve every problem neighbor to neighbor as the city. That's, we have limited powers. The Bill of Rights has to be respected. And that means that we can't solve everything. You don't like how your neighbor's property looks because of the paint job. That might not be something we have the power to do anything about. That's where homeowners associations and covenants come in. Want to live in that kind of community? You need to search that kind of neighborhood or subdivision or covenants out. Chris, I don't know, is there anything else you want to add?
Just real quick. I just want to apologize to the council, especially the mayor, because it wasn't, certainly wasn't my intention for you all to get a lot of calls and a lot of, you know, questions about it and it become a political issue. So like Dirk said, we've met a staff to really, you know, come up with a way to move forward from this so it doesn't happen again. And just, just wanted to make sure, you know, you know, from staff, that wasn't, you know, our intention to drag you to some kind of political issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
So with that, questions?
Alderman Potter.
Are you suggesting that all notices now and then from neighborhood improvement officers and zoning violations won't include language at the end that, you know, basically talks about fines?
We're going to take it case by case. It's, there are ones where we really need to, we're not sure of our evidence, and we need to have a conversation. So, for example, we, Chris and I have talked about a property where the allegation is that somebody's improperly running a business out of their house. What is our evidence for doing that? So that's one where we'd say, let's, you need to have the conversation. We're not going to threaten a fine because we don't have good evidence about it. We just have a complaint.
I'm more concerned about property maintenance issues.
On property maintenance, were Brad Howman's issues?
Right.
Brad Howman's statements? Those are going to come with the usual stuff.
Okay.
Brad, that's relevant evidence. Brad knows exactly what he's doing there. That's not the issue. And the ones where we know the zoning use is improper, that somebody is doing something, we have that evidence or it's obvious to us, then we're going to have the same fine. But what we've agreed as a staff is we're going to be a little more nuanced about what's the particular problem? What's the particular right question to do? And some of that's a function of, I mean, stuff that our police department does every day. What's our level of evidence before we take the next level of action?
Are there any other comments or questions? Alderman Went?
Yeah, one of the things that kind of came out of this, and I know that we've kind of had these conversations before, and I think it was when Sean Chris was here. But obviously, this was, the catalyst for this was a neighborhood complaint. And I know that most of what we have within the city, we kind of talk about that it's complaint based, that we don't necessarily have the funds or the staffing to go out and basically police the community and being proactive and just going out and looking for violations. And I'm not sure that that's something that we'd want to do anyway. But as the staff does go out, you know, for instance, with this case, because I had a couple of residents ask me about it that live in this area, to say, you know, your staff came out there. They looked at the Rainbow House, but they didn't say anything about this clear violation that was across the street or whatever. And, and so as staff, I know we're not necessarily proactively going out and searching for things. But if we go out into the community and we see something, are we addressing it? Or do we only address it if somebody complained about it?
No, we're addressing, so in this particular example, for example, the Rainbow House, we're aware of another property that's got some, we're aware that they have some erosion issues going on. And so they've tarped it in a way that's not acceptable. And so we're working with them. We noticed it. We start the process, which begins with the first notice to try and achieve cooperation and compliance. So we are noticing those things. And yes, the round robin starts. As soon as you say, "You're a problem," though, what about that neighbor? And so we will then take that complaint seriously. But Brad works on both. It's not just complaints. It's things he notices in the neighborhood. And we wrote those ordinances, all reminded, as you'll recall, in the neighborhood improvement stuff, to include reports from you all being in the community to Brad to be able to, it's not a complaint per se, but it's a question of, "Have you noticed? Have you done this?" So while Brad doesn't close his eyes, so to speak, while driving to a complaint investigation, he's aware of that, and then we take up those issues. The idea that you're going to get them all and bring it into perfect compliance in the community is an unachievable goal. What we're doing is we're working on the ones that have required the most attention and devoting our resources to those. And, you know, 3,000 cases of complaints a year Brad handles. That's an amazing number. That's 10 a day. So he's handling a lot of those. And some of them, you know, he initiates, and some are initiated by the complaint process. So it takes both to get it done.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I have a question, but I'm not sure if it's for you, Dirk, or if it's for Marty. But, and I don't think that it's something that really the council should be involved in. But I'm just curious, how do you intend to handle the outstanding debt of cleaning up the property? And what is that debt that that homeowner owes us for sending, or owes the city for sending in contractors?
So it's $115 for each time the contractor goes out. That's a flat fee, and there's a process for that, which is they get the bill. They don't get the bill, and there's a, because we're home rule, it's reduced to a judgment, and then it becomes a lien on the property.
Okay. And so now that property's up to $345?
Forty-five dollars.
Forty-five dollars? Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding this issue? Thank you so much for informing us. The next item is the Administrator's Update. Marty Bonix.
I don't have anything tonight except for one thing. Friday, from 11:00 to 2:00, we're implementing Food Truck Friday. So for the employees, we're going to move that around to different locations. But I'd like to invite city council members and the mayor to come and join us if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
And it's, you know, everyone pays themselves. So it's just an opportunity for lunch and to get together since we've all been cooped up with our face masks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Marty? The last item is the COVID-19 Budget Update. Carol Barnes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can everyone hear me? Okay, I've got a couple of things I'd like to go through tonight. The first one being our major revenue report that we've shown you in the past. It has a little bit different look today. We tried to make it a bit, a little more user friendly as far as reading it. And the first thing I'd like to do is if you go down through the July column, and you'll find two revenue sources there that have red boxes around them, our local use tax and then our motor fuel down below. And I just wanted to point out, our local use tax continues to, those numbers continue to come in strong. That is, the sales tax we get from internet sales. And then our motor fuel as well is holding its own and staying right on target. The remaining revenues for July, like our food and liquor, our hotel motel, those will not be available until August 1st meeting or the August 4th. They'll be available by August 1st, and we'll present them at our next council meeting. Then I'd like to draw your attention to, it's kind of the off-white yellow line, the column going down the page. Based on council's request last week, we did add a year-to-date column. And so for this month, we're looking at June, which is our complete June column. And you can kind of go down there. We've got red highlights that highlight the actual revenue that has come through for June. And then we've got the percentage variances from budget as well as from the COVID. We've also added another column right next to it that is the original 2020 budget, just for your information. So now, if we go to the next page, Don, and follow that yellow column all the way down. There you go. You'll see the total on these 18 major revenue sources at the very bottom of that column, or not the very bottom, right above the blue gap. You'll see that we have totaled the year-to-date budget through June as well as our year-to-date actual and the COVID. So for the month of June, if we take a look at the actuals compared to the budget, we are down about $1.3 million from our original budget. Kind of, and right kind of in the center compared to our COVID budget. And then the last thing, just to draw your attention, is our little box that we've had down there below. There's a comparison of the total original budget, $117 million of revenue that has been reduced to $107 million. So it's the $10 million in revenue shortfall that we continue to try to reconcile by the end of December 31st. Any questions on the revenues?
Carol, I have a question.
If not, go ahead.
So weren't these like the top 18 revenue producers? Isn't, or is there a?
Basically, the top 18, and they're the most vulnerable, the ones that are apt to change.
Okay.
And so, go ahead, Your Honor.
That was, that was it. I was just curious what was happening with the other part of it, if the rest of it that's not on here is holding stable as we expected it to be.
Okay. If you look at the yellow box, Don, if you just stay on that sheet, the major revenues in that first column on the bottom box, at the left right, or yeah, the bottom right, the original budget for those 18 major revenues was $71 million. And we've reduced those vulnerable ones down to about $60 million. The next line down are all the other revenues, and they make up about $45 million. And the COVID budget is pretty close to being the same number. And the reason for that is, they also dropped. But that particular section of the budget, all the other revenues, also included, we had some FEMA reimbursements, you might recall, from our flood that came in. We got a CDBG grant, Rebuild Illinois Fund, COVID grant money that we're looking at. And it kind of offsets those shortfalls. So right now, from a budget standpoint on COVID, even though a lot of small ones did go down, overall, it's about the same on the smaller ones.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the revenues? And if not, Don, we can go to the next page. And I did want to give counsel, it's been six months now, the end of June. I'd like to give a financial report, just very briefly, through the end of June. And the numbers we're going to be talking about tonight are on a cash basis. But before I go through the individual funds, I would like to show you just a summary of where we are at across all funds. And so in front of you, you'll see the summary. And this is the total city funds. It does not include any of our pension, police and fire funds. And again, I want to point out, this is on a cash basis. So normally, you know, like at the end of the year when you do your audit, you've got 60-day accruals for revenues and expenditures. This is a snapshot in time. But if we kind of look at month over month on a cash basis, it should hold true a pretty, a pretty good picture to present to the council. So if we look at this summary, the second column in, you'll see that is our adopted, our original adopted 2020 budget. our original adopted 2020 budget. We had adopted $117 million of revenues and $125 million of expenditures. Our COVID budget, and these are the numbers we just talked about on the revenues, we've reduced the revenues, basically $10 million down to $107 million. And our expenditures, the cuts that we've made is in the $6 million range, down to So this is where our total, total comparison is. I know council requested this last week to take a snapshot of where we're at overall. And year-to-date through June, our total revenues have come in at $54 million. And our total expenditures are at $53 million, or 353,380,000. And so if you just take a look at that, we are very fortunate that we are holding our own through June 30th. The first three months of the year, January, February, March, before COVID hit, were very strong months on our revenue side especially. And we had excellent revenues within the COVID hit. And the next six months are, are going to be potentially fallible months ahead for us as well. If we look at a percentage basis, the year-to-date collections against our adopted budget is about 46% of revenues to 42% expenditures. And if on, we look at the COVID, we're at about 50% revenues to 44%. As you know, revenues and expenditures don't necessarily come in evenly throughout the year. And one item that potentially makes this expenditure line a little bit off, is that we do have some capital projects that we will be spending money here in the last six months of the year. But as we look at this report, the one thing that I did want to say, your department heads and city staff across the board are executing the recommended COVID budget with all of the cuts directed by the mayor and council. They've been standing down on expenditures. We implemented the hiring freeze and we've been operating without any seasonal employees. And so, the plan so far has been working and we're, we're holding our own on that. Any questions on the summary?
Your honor?
If not?
Oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand. Alderman, went.
Sorry. Could you get to, because I appreciate the, the comment that, you know, expenditures don't always come in, you know, 1/12th, 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 and neither does revenue. Would you be able to, to give us maybe for last year and, or maybe the last three years, at the end of June, in those years on a cash basis, how much of the expenses had we gone through? Because if, if we're averaging somewhere, you know, 42%, 44%, I'm going to feel a lot more comfortable than if in the last three years, we were at this way through the year, because I appreciate your comment that the capital costs are, are heavy in, in the second half of the year. If the last three years, we were only spending about 30% or 33% in past years, and then this year we're up in the, in the 40s, I think that tells a very different story. So, if we could just get that, just for the last three years, at the end of June, where we were on a cash basis as a percentage of the adopted budget, that would be, I think, helpful for me, understanding where we are on the expense side.
Okay. No, I'm happy to do that. And I should be able to get that reasonably, reasonably quick, Mike.
Great. I hope it wasn't going to take much time.
No, no. I, yeah, it should not take much time. But again, I, I do want to stress, you know, we've got six months ahead of us that we don't know what we're entering into. And it's not just six months, it could very well end up being eight, 18 months or a couple of years ahead of us. So we just want to enter cautiously. I just want to point that out, so that the department has, have truly been executing the COVID budget as had been requested by council. So with that, I'm going to try to stick with about 10 to 15 minutes. As you know, we can go to the next screen, Don. We've got about 52 funds citywide that we monitor. And so I'm going to choose about 10 or 12 of the biggest ones. And if you have other questions along the way, I'll try to answer those. And as you know too, I'm always available if you have a question, you know, aside from tonight that we want to get into a little more detail, I'm happy to address that as well. But I'm going to stick to kind of the 10 to 12 biggest funds. And the first one is the general fund. And again, this is the COVID revised budget, it's not the adopted. I did send out with Marty, the actual original budget compared to our year-to-date. So on your own, you can compare that, or if you have any questions regarding the original budget comparison, please call me. But this is the COVID budget as we have reduced it so far. So if we take a look down to the bottom, we talked here early on when we were trying to reconcile the COVID budget, we did a lot of, of expenditure cuts to try to offset the revenues. But we were still falling short about $2.5 million. And we had briefly talked, potentially that we might apply 957,000, it's in that little pink column, or the side, potentially to apply 957 from last year towards that shortfall. And then the other thing was to consider a drawdown and we kind of walked away from that and said that what we want to do is to try to find that 1.5 million. So over the last eight weeks or so, that's what staff has been working on. And hopefully, we're going to be bringing a proposal to you to try to, try to shore that up from a budget perspective. If we take a look at that with the $2.5 million drawdown, as it's shown in that first column, it still leaves our fund, net fund balance at 23% with about 84 days of fund balance to expenditures. So that was how we adopted, and we didn't adopt it, that's the recommended COVID. Now, for the first six months, if we look at the year-to-date, you'll see total revenues, that first blue line, coming in at $21 million compared to 40 million of the COVID budget. And that's about 51.67% in the general fund, on a cash basis. If you look at expenditures, we're at about 46%, 20 million compared to 43 million. So for the first six months in the general fund alone, and this is the general operating of the city, it's all the police and the fire, it's all your HR and general government as well as finance, we are actually $839,000 to the good. And so through June, right now, we are not looking at any drawdown for those first six months. And there isn't capital in this particular fund. So it's primarily expenditures, just really hunkering down with our, with our department heads. Any questions on the, on the general fund? I might want to point out, public work is one area that may be a little more seasonal. You know, we've got our snow removal with salt and whatnot, as well as some of our street maintenance work can be a little bit seasonal. So the back end may be a little bit stronger on the expenditures. But overall, the general fund normally runs pretty true. And I'll go back on that three-year history and we'll compare that in the next, at the next council meeting when we get together. So if there's no more questions on the general fund, if we could turn to, it is page six, Don, and we're going to take a quick look at the library. Sorry, I've got to find my page two. So for the library, again, we, we had agreed upon or are looking towards no transfer into the library fund from the general fund, that's our new COVID recommended budget. And as you know, the library was closed for several weeks and now they've been up and operational. And overall, this fund is also holding their own, and I want to kind of go through the actual. If you take a look at taxes, the very top line, budgeted taxes, and that is the levy that we actually pass, is 2.6 million. Year-to-date, we're at 969,000. But that's only the first quarter of taxes. And so, by the end of the year, we should come very close to hitting that 2.6 million. We look at the transfers in, we're at about 50% of our transfers, that, a lot of that money comes from CIP into the library to help pay for the debt. Then if you take a look at their operating budget, their year-to-date expenses are 1.3 million, annualized that'd be about 2.6. So they're pretty good on, on a budget standpoint on the library overall operating. And then if you look down at the bottom line, they are drawing down about $206,000, more than half of what the budget was, the minus 33. But again, that's primarily because the revenue is not coming in yet from taxes. Any questions on library? Then we can move to parks, and it's kind of a little bit of that same picture, the very next page, Don, on page number seven. Take a look at the park fund, again, you'll see taxes on the very top line, adopted taxes, 2,400,000, and they only come in at 915 for the first quarter. So as the year progresses, we're going to see an improvement to the bottom line. On the expenditure side, as you know, all the seasonals have not been hired in parks. The primary expenditure that has come in is basically paying for 100% of the captain's table. So on the front end here of the first six months, we had a very large expenditure outlay for capital. So you look at the bottom line, there is a drawdown of 733,000 year-to-date, budget is 434 drawdown. But again, the primary drawdown is because taxes have not come in yet. So as we've, as we've put the COVID budget together, I, I think they're holding, holding their own as well. And then the motor fuel, the very next fund on the next page, this is a nice positive fund to look at. We had adopted the COVID budget with a potential reduction in intergovernmental revenue down to 1.3 million. And that was based on the state's recommendations originally. Are we on the right page? Stay on page seven, Don, if you would.
Please, scooch it back.
And the good news is, is through June, there we go, through June, we have actually gotten in 2.7 million. Because our estimates have been better on motor fuel, as well as we're getting that rebuild Illinois money that's coming in, and we're going to be getting our sixth, our second payment here by the end of the month. So that's nice, from flexibility from a CIP project standpoint, because those are monies that have to be exclusively used for capital projects. And then the next fund, if you turn to page 21, Don, I'm going to jump ahead, I'm skipping all the small funds, our revolving loan funds and all of our TIPS. TIPS will be going through hopefully in the next month or two. We've got a small group of staff going through all the TIPS now, and I know we'll be doing a final report on those to the council. If you get to that page 21, just a very quick snapshot on, on capital projects, again, right on track. Take a look at the bottom line, you know, we've got a little money in the bank. The revenue from the utilities and the home rule sales taxes coming in good for that first six months. We may see a dip now in the second half, but for the six, first six months, it's holding its own. And we've spent about half of our CIP project money, if you look down on CIP projects, 3,616 was budgeted, and we've spent about a million full. And then the next area, I'm just going to kind of look at across the board on our enterprise funds, but they are all holding their own. When we went through and did the COVID budget, they removed a lot of capital projects, just because we wanted to retain cash flow. We didn't know for sure if the COVID budget would have an impact on our user fee with people paying behind. So we did cut out and defer some of those capital projects. But if you look down at the bottom line on the year-to-date, like for water, they're to the good 228,000, and the net available cash, it's the little pink column at the bottom. Let's see, can you see that one? Don, I'm sorry, you need to go to page 22, I'm so sorry. Flip one page. There we go. The little pink down at the bottom, you'll see our net available cash is 3.8 million in June. So that's nice and steady from, from what we had budgeted. And then the same is holding true for the next fund on page 23, WPC. We are showing a slight drawdown from a year-to-date standpoint. And as you recall, WPC is the one that gave, ran, gave the loan for the captain's table. So all of that capital money went out one time in, in June. And that's part of what's making that drawdown. And then we've also got some capital projects that have not been completed yet. And with stormwater, real please, stormwater is holding its own. From a cash flow perspective, if you look in the pink box, it's only got about $10,000 in cash reserves, and we know that's the one we have to continue to watch is storms. But total revenues to expenditures through June, it's holding its own. Sanitation is the same, it's in, it's in good shape, breaking even. And then the last couple of funds I'd like to point out are page 25, our active health And if we look at the revenues, which is in the blue row, we budgeted about 5.4 in revenues, we're at 2.7, that is spot-on as far as charges back from other departments. So the expenditures are being pulled out of the departments, the revenue's coming into health. But if you look down into the general government expenditure side, we budgeted 5.4 million of expenditures, we are at 2.3, which annualized would be about 4.6. And we do have six months of claims in there. And so I am hopeful, I need to talk to Allison some more, but as you know, we've, I think we've got about 20 open, frozen positions right now that we have not filled. And those positions not being on our health plan, as well as, my understanding is, with COVID, not as many people are going to the doctor as regularly as what they had been. This fund right here, I think we're going to see potentially some increase in our fund balance as we go through the year. So we'll kind of keep our eye on that and we'll keep reporting back. On the liability, oh, we can, if you turn to page 26 and look at IT, I've only got a couple left, a couple funds left, page 26 for IT. The main thing I want to point out here is if you go halfway down the page on the year-to-date, you'll see capital projects of the 227,000. That is primarily all the improvements we did to the council chambers. So IT is showing a drawdown here for the first six months of about 171,000, and they do have cash reserves. As you know, we, we approved that project in total, we have, we have ample cash reserves on, on hand in that fund. In our liability fund, on the next page, on page 27, again, that one is holding its own. There's a timing of when some of the premium payments and some of the claims are coming through in that fund. But overall, we have a drawdown of about 900,000 compared to 2.3 million drawdown from the budget. As you recall, when we were balancing the 2020 budget, we adopted it drawing down the liability fund as well as the fleet fund for one-time drawdown to help, to help balance. If you do look down on our net available cash reserves, in that pink line on liability, they do have a very health reserve, healthy cash reserve right now of 9.7 million. And then we're getting down to the last two, the first one is facility. Again, it's holding its own. I just want to point out, we had discussed, and so I actually put a, a transfer for the first six months through, potentially drawing the facility budget down, 550,000, a one-time drawdown to help with the COVID. So you'll see a 275,000 drawdown through June. And I'm sorry, is someone raising their hand?
Alderman Parker?
Yeah, can we go back to the fleet fund? There's 9.6 million in reserves there? Is that waiting to like pay for some trucks that we bought or something? That's a lot of money.
Yeah, and the fleet fund is the very next one I'm going to be talking about.
I thought we were, I thought we already saw that, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
I was getting confused here a little bit.
Alderman Parker? Some of those numbers are kind of looking the same, but yeah, well, I'll finish facility here and we'll turn the page to fleet. Oh, yes, and I see another.
My question's still going to be there when you get to fleet though.
Okay. I promise I'll answer.
I think Alderman may have a question on facilities. Alderman, went.
Yeah, the, the $500,000 transfer out, that was just out of facilities, that was just a recommended, that, that hasn't been adopted, that wasn't part of the original budget, that was just...
It was, it was, we have not amended, officially amended the budget, but for, for showing what the COVID budget would be. But for showing what the COVID budget would be if we implemented what we have been recommending, this is where those fund balances would lie with that 275. So if we don't amend it, that will not be showing as going out.
Do we have kind of a timeframe for that? I mean, you guys have been working great, and I know we've been talking about these recommendations, but we've never actually had a full discussion about any of them specifically or adopted them. But I feel that because of how much we've been talking, that it's, staff has been kind of going off of that as the recommendation that we're near the number we want because everybody has kind of just conceded that this is how we're going to move forward. And I'm not saying we're not, I'm just saying if we've got all of these things and these recommendations have been out there for eight weeks, I think it's probably time that, at least for some of them, we have a full discussion. We vote on them individually or in groups or whatever so that we can determine, are we going to do this or aren't we going to do this, so that we then know what our...
Alderman, Carol, would you mind if I defer to Marty for that? Maybe he can guide us in what his plan is with that.
Yes, thank you for that question, Alderman, when. We are prepared to, and I think Carol and also the directors who are managing their budgets every day, we're prepared to ask the council to go ahead and amend the budget with all the recommendations that we've done so far. And we'll also be coming back for some additional recommendations as I've discussed previously. So I think, and Carol, you tell me when, but I think in one of our next meetings, we'd be prepared to do that.
No, that would be great. We're kind of at a point too where we're starting next year's budget. And so I have told the department heads here at some point, I want them to actually revisit their entire COVID budget across the board. And so I'll work with Marty, and we'll decide if we need to take a look at going out one more time before we come in with our final recommendations. But we should absolutely be able to prepare that for you here within a couple of weeks.
I just don't want this ball, I mean, it's moved down the field quite a bit and without any true action. And so I would just hate for a situation where we're making assumptions, and then when we wind up getting to have the vote, a few things don't get passed or get pulled out, and now all of a sudden we're further behind the eight ball than we thought. Or vice versa, maybe other things get added in, and maybe we're not as far under as we thought. But I think that that is something that we need to do sooner than later.
Okay, no, that'll be great. We'll plan on that.
Carol and Marty, could you also, when you have components of the proposal that are like this one with facilities management, where we're going to pull $500,000 out to replenish some missing revenue, can you bring to us why that makes sense? And was there improper demand on the departments to put money into that facility fund that isn't necessary moving forward, so that those departments can recognize that in their preparation for next year's budget, that they don't really need to fund that because we were overfunding it anyway?
Or if the answer is, we take that $500,000 out, and because of that, we're not going to be able to, you know, replace the windows in this building and/or tuck point this or replace the roof on this, you know. Give us what the offset is for that. Like the mayor said, I mean, if we just had extra money sitting around, that's one thing. But my hope is that that's not how we were running the city, where we just had just cash sitting around that we never needed, that these changes are going to have real-life consequences, and so we need to understand what those are. So when we decide to take $500,000 out of that fund, which is fairly considerable based on how much reserves it's got, we're taking a third of its reserves out, what are we not going to be able to do in the next year or two?
We will do that.
Yep, happy to go through that. And so all the points here that were just made also apply to the fleet fund, because we had also discussed potentially drawing that down for the 700. And we will go through that in detail. That will show kind of a five-year plan and which vehicles we are deferring, pushing back as far as the replacements. But on page 28, Don, if we want to move towards the fleet, I'll first answer Mr...
This is Parker.
Parker's question here. Yep, I'm sorry, I was looking at my page. If you take a look down on the pink, our net available cash reserves are $3,777,000. The ending balance is $8.5 million, but that also includes assets. So when we look at the internal service funds and the internal service funds as well as enterprise funds, we always want to take a look at the net available cash reserves. That's kind of the fund balance, cash number that we need to look at. And again, if you look at fleet, you will see capital projects of 1.3 million actual capital that came through the fleet. If you recall, it was all the police vehicles that were authorized back in the fall of 19 that did not get delivered and paid for until the 2020 budget. And then there was a couple of public works, some big vectors, and it seems like one other large piece of equipment that made up those totals. And again, they were authorized in the fall of 19 and paid for in 2020. There are no vehicles out of the 2020 original budget that are included in the fleet. They've all been deferred, and everything's been pushed out at least a year over a five- to 10-year plan. And we'll go through that when we get together to go through the actual amended budget. But if we look at fleet, the charges for services that have been billed back to the individual funds, it's pretty much right on at the 50% mark. And if you add together the capital projects and the general operating of that fund, you know, it's about, as far as the garage charge is, about 50% as well. And the same holds true then for that bottom line. So fleet, you know, it's something that maybe we want to talk about in a little more detail with the amended budget. And yes, I see a hand?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Alderman, when.
And so I guess to that point, like, the year-to-date of $375,000 taken out, that's just because we're halfway through the year, and with the assumption that we're taking out the 750, the actual cash hasn't been... Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure that I understood.
And that is simply a journal entry, you know, that can be made and reversed out very easily based upon final approval by council. We are not assuming anything. But for presentation purposes for the six months, I kind of wanted to drop it in because it tied out with all the other reports we've been showing you over the last couple of months. And so with that, again, there's a lot of small funds I did not touch upon. And like I say, I'm available if you have questions on some of the smaller funds. But I wanted to give you an update for a snapshot for June, and I will look back on some of that three-year history so we can do a little better comparison in August.
Thank you, Carol. Are there any questions for Carol? Alderman Potter?
I don't have any questions. I've got some comments I'd like to make. One more week where the council's paying attention. Revenues are coming in higher than we expected based on the COVID doomsday budget analysis, especially things like the use tax. It's obvious that a lot of people are going online buying, and it's very healthy. We've also got healthy local option sales tax. Some of our major retailers are still going very well. And so, you know, I continue to say that I don't think that things are going to be near as bad as we originally projected. Having said that, I think it's time to put some little sunshine into some of the things that we've talked about before. I guess I was a little taken aback by a couple of weeks ago when I found out there's four departments that are studying for the budget for potentially to be privatized or reorganized or something like that. And I'm particularly disturbed when I found out how those departments found out about how they were going to be affected in the way that message was delivered. Beyond that, I think the public deserves to know what we intend to do. These are public matters. I'm concerned about the possibility of privatizing HR services. They're exceptionally important, and you can start talking to people and our department heads on how invaluable they are to them. The IT in our department is on the chopping block. And if you read our latest report from those, the report that we just got a couple of weeks ago, cybersecurity and data privacy are very important in moving ahead for municipalities. And having those folks on site in addition to being there for our first responders in case there's a problem with some of our technology, I think is very important. The next group was engineering. We have, without a doubt, the best capital improvement program in the area, and that's due in part a lot, the excellent professional engineering staff that we have. And I don't want to roll back any of those things that are going on. And last but not least, you know, the public needs to know that we're talking about privatizing or doing something different with inspections. And for those of you who don't have a history there, we've tried that before, and it was an abject failure. And in fact, the public was particularly impacted by this when plan reviews took months to get done. And, you know, those are the kinds of things that are community customer service things, and we need to be careful about that. So I'm just, I think we need to throw a little sunshine, let people know what we're thinking about doing forward. And I have significant reservations about all four of those things.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. I did want to offer up, you know, for full disclosure on why those are being looked at in a thoughtful manner is that there was a proposal that came up of where there could be potential cuts, and there wasn't a lot of substance behind it. And I think that was concerning to the council. And I like that the administration has taken a step back to look at a more thoughtful way to address staffing instead of kind of a pick-and-through-it process that could be quite impactful to our residents. So I appreciate staff taking the direction of looking at it in a careful, professional, collaborative matter. I believe that all of the departments are heavily involved in that discussion, and I think it's a good way to approach it. Alderman, when?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I guess to piggyback off of what Alderman Potter said is I couldn't agree more that these discussions should absolutely be in public. That's why when we had the vote at our previous meeting, it wasn't just a, oh, we're doing a contract with GovHR. It talked about all of the things it was going to look into. It was very public. It was on the record, and it was out there. Now, I can't speak to how it was then communicated to staff before or after that, but I do agree that those need to be communicated properly to staff as a collaborative approach to it. But to say things on the council floor regarding these people being on the chopping block, I think that's the kind of language that really reinforces and causes fear with our staff. Because that's not how I approach it. I don't think that that's how the other councilmen that I've talked with about this, that we have a responsibility to the taxpayers, especially in a time like now where revenues are down, and we need to look at things and make sure that they're the right approach. We just had, from my point of view, we had a change in how we do legal services at the council. And I don't think I've talked with anyone at the council level or administratively that have said that we are not getting excellent, excellent, excellent legal services that has allowed us to do additional things and given us more resources and how do we approach stuff. So I think that that's important. That was a good move and an approach. Not all of them will be good, but that's about us doing our due diligence. And that's why we're doing this in a thoughtful manner, not just saying, hey, come to us with a recommendation. We've talked about it already. We know that it's going to go through. We've got an independent third party that's going to look at it, that knows what they're talking about. And I look forward to their investigation and recommendations. Like I've said with all of these things, if the cost savings is minimal, then we wouldn't do it. The institutional knowledge, the convenience of having people right there far outweighs a minimal decrease in costs. But if they come back and the cost savings is substantial, or there's a different approach or collaborative approach with our neighbors to do building inspections or whatever and make that easier, that if you're doing work on the Illinois side of the river, you get consistency from community to community, I think that that would be something that would be beneficial to all of us. So that's my take on the sunshine of getting that information out there. I think it is, and I think that it's a good approach.
Are there any other comments? Did you have any other comments for Carol's presentation, Alderman Potter? You said you had a couple of things. No? All right, well, thank you very much, Carol. I appreciate the information.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'd now like to open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to address the council this evening? I do have one public comment that was provided via Janine that I'd like to read. It is from Kirk Witherspoon. "The paint used on the home is not akin to that typically employed here for private residences. However, repeated viewing quickly acclimates one's eyes to it. It is not garish to my mind. I think that the city ordinance referenced would not stand up to a First Amendment challenge which the city is obliged to respect and protect, and more particularly the assertion of protected political speech. The homeowner was quoted as stating she has a similar rainbow flag. Such leads me to think she may support LBGQ, a right that should not be infringed or abridged. It can be added that bright colors can be found in accents upon other Moline residents. That said, hues are often favored and similarly employed in large communities, especially in African-American ones. We might be grateful the homeowner did not plaster big messages like swastikas on the one hand, or murals of political figures or victims of differing sorts. Finally, the city needs ask itself about any inappropriately selective enforcement of its ordinances that censur of its homeowner may reflect. I suggest a stroll along that avenue for enlightenment. The old manual arts building is in decay and may for that reason be justifiably deemed an eyesore or health hazard. More immediately problematic are the failing sidewalk slabs as well as broken and outstanding handrails next to a high retaining wall a child could topple down. The condition of that rail has been poor since I was a child in the 1950s and 60s. It is a worse safety hazard now." That is it for public comment. With no further business in the committee as a whole, I offer an adjournment, and we will begin in the council meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Will there be an invocation? And we will begin in the council meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Will there be an invocation this evening, Alderman Scoonmaker?
Yes, your honor.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we ask your guidance and protection for our first responders. We especially ask for your blessing upon the seven members of the Rock Island Arsenal Fire Department who are directly affected by COVID and most especially the arsenal firefighter who has recently been hospitalized for COVID. We ask your blessing upon those fine people and we ask for his, for the healing of that member.
Thank you, Alderman Scoonmaker. Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
President.
Parker?
I'm present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Scoonmaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your honor, request approval of committee of the whole and council, council and close session meeting minutes of July 14th, 2020 and appointments made during committee of the whole on July 21st, 2020. Council Bill 3019, whoops, I'm sorry about that. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3019 dash 2020 and ordinance amending chapter 35 zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section 35 dash 5209 fence and wall requirements. By repealing subsection one in its entirety and acting in lieu thereof, one new subsection one relating to the same subject matter. Council Bill 4007 dash 2020 is special ordinance closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a licensing agreement with Linda Construction Company and its representatives for use of public right of way, as well as certain park property and city-owned property in conjunction with the I-74 bridge construction. Resolutions. Council Bill 1079 dash 2020, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a land lease agreement between the city of Moline and GTP Acquisition Partners II LLC for city-owned property located at 4213 16th Avenue, Moline.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Parker.
Second, Went.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1080 dash 2020, a resolution authorizing certain minutes and portions of minutes of executive sessions of the city council to be maintained as confidential under further review by the city council and authorizing the remainder of said executive session minutes referenced herein to be made available for public inspection.
Motion to approve 1080, uh, 1080 2020, Parker.
Second, Went.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
Um, that motion carries.
Council Bill 1081 dash 2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a sub-recipient agreement with Moline Coal Valley Community Unit School District Number 40 for the CARES Act grant program.
Motion to approve 1081 2020, Parker.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Parker, a second by Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye, I'm sorry. Aye.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1082 dash 2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a sub-recipient agreement with Project NOW for the CDBG CARES Act grant program.
Motion to approve 1082 2020, Parker.
Second, Went.
Motion by Parker, second by Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1083 dash 2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an MDU agreement for immediate come online services as part of the CARES Act grant program.
Motion to approve 1083 2020, Parker.
Second, Went.
Motion by Parker, second by Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Second reading ordinances. Council Bill 3020 dash 2020, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2020B of the Moline, of the city of Moline, Illinois, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement disclosure with Robert W. Baird and Company for underwriting services related to the refinancing of the 2020B bonds. And that is all I have this evening, your honor.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
Uh, now I'll turn to council business and as we've done in the past, I'd like to just go around the council chamber and offer up an opportunity if any of the aldermen have something they'd like to discuss. Alderman Williams?
Nothing, your honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Uh, just one thing. I'd like to, uh, forward to Janine an email, um, that has a couple of, uh, of, uh, videos on it for the housing authority that were created. Um, it was kind of eye-opening to see just how nice some of these units are. So Janine, if I email that to you, can you send it out to the rest of the council?
Sure, thank you.
You bet. If you have any questions on it, please give me, any, any of you council members, if you have any questions about what you, you know, the video, uh, please contact me. I'd be more than happy to either help you or send you in the right direction.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. Alderman Went?
Not at this time, thank you.
Alderman Potter?
Nothing, your honor.
Alderman Moyer? Alderman Scoonmaker?
Nothing, your honor.
Alderman Waldron?
Uh, yes, your honor. I'd like to.
I think someone needs to move their mic. Thank you. Alderman Waldron?
I'd like to give a shout out to the school board. They had a very difficult decision to make with return to learn plan. Was it gonna make everybody happy no matter what they did? But I thought they had a thoughtful process and did a good job.
You know, I would concur. I just read it over today and I was impressed that they actually were able to provide some alternatives to families to help address their individual situations. So I thought it was impressive too. I, they're doing a great job over there.
Moline going forward.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron, for bringing that up. Alderman Berg?
Nothing, your honor.
Thank you. And I don't have anything this evening. I'd like to turn it to Marty. Do you have anything for the council?
No.
Are there any other staff members that'd like to address the council? And I'd like to offer an opportunity for public comment one more time. Do we have any comment from the public?
No.
Thank you. Um, I believe we have some executive session business. Who's, who's got the note?
I was not aware that we had any.
Oh, did you not get my email? No, I'm sorry. Uh, Dirk, what, what's the citation for, um, appointment?
We're talking about the email you sent to Burke's company. He has 2C1.
Do you happen to have it?
Let me pull out. Yeah, what could be read, sorry.
It's sufficient to just say 2C1. It's the appointment or what a specific person know appointments.
Do you want to just read it, Janine?
Sure.
So that we got it on the record and then Alderman Moyer maybe can make the motion for me?
Let me find it, sorry. It's here, it's here. Okay. And it's.
You can just read it, Janine.
Okay, so not as a motion?
Uh, just make a recommendation, please, and then Alderman Moyer a motion.
Okay. Um, the recommendation is for a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of, and it was 2C1, appointment employment capacity should discipline performance or dismissal of specific employees, five ILC S 120, 2C1.
I'll make a motion. We enter into executive session. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Moyer. And we have a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please. Alderman Scoonmaker?
Sorry, aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Will not convene an executive session.
Before we go, also 2C3 because as I called, it's not just the appointment of an employee, it's the appointment of an officer.
That's correct.
2C3 also has got to be in the motion. Did we correct that?
Can you amend the motion, please? Or I guess we can't amend the motion. Can you make a secondary motion?
Yeah, another motion.
Another motion, please.
2C3?
Yes, the selection of a person to fill a public office is defined in the act, including a vacancy in public office in the public body, is given power to appoint or ordinate for the performance or discipline or removal after, but what else? When the public body is given power to remove you.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Waldron under the, the other provision of the executive session. Roll call, please.
Sorry to turn the page. I'm in trouble tonight. Okay. Alderman Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Will not convene an executive session. If you have called in, would you please disconnect?